Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here.
Will you please join in the reflection?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is one of the great honors that I periodically have, and that's to administer an oath of office to a new police officer. And I hope the chief will come up with me and make the introduction. Why don't we invite him up and introduce himself?
Come on up, Ross. So, I'd like everybody to meet Ross Horton. Ross, come over here and stand next to me. Don't be afraid.[67.56][67.56](Laughter).
Be afraid. People are very afraid.
That comes later. Ross has been a reserve officer with us since July of 2009, and I'm really pleased to have him sworn in tonight as a regular full-time officer. He's really grown a lot and come a long way in the three years that we've known him and earned the trust of the veteran officers in the department, and I think he's going to be a real asset to the community. I'm really, really looking forward to having him here. And Ross's brother Bill Horton is one of our full-time officers. We had the pleasure of swearing in a few years ago, and his sister-in-law Katie's here along with what he said was the prettiest baby in the world, Nora, so.[107.54][107.54](Laughter).
Thank you. It's an honor to be able to do this. I'm going to go ahead and state verbally the oath and repeat after me. Hi.
Hi.
State your name.
Ross Horton.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will uphold the law?
That I will uphold the law.
And support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And support the Constitution of the United States?
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics?
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations?
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties?
While faithfully performing my duties?
As police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
As police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
Okay, very good.[154.62][154.62](Applause).[155.62][155.62](Laughter). The family want to step forward and take some pictures? They're welcome to stand here, too.[178.12][178.12](Laughter).
Congratulations.
I don't have to sign up. There are five of us at once. Department had two. All right. So.
You've got to smile.[186.12][186.12](Laughter).
Here, if you want to. My place right now.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.[192.12][192.12](Laughter). All right. We're going to actually go ahead with citizens' comments with -- that's what I've got there. Adoption of the agenda. Ceremonies for acclamations, and we've done that. Citizens' comments, any topics that are not on the agenda? Anybody have anything they want to say? Three minutes. Have you signed in, Bill?
I have.
Bill, very good. And here, there he is. Come on forward. State your name and whether you live in Oregon City or not.
Mayor Neely. Is it on? Now it's on. Mayor Neely, commissioners, my name is Bill Daniels, and I live in Oregon City. As you know, or maybe you don't know, but the Neighborhood Association, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, has tried for a number of months, perhaps years, to get a couple of extra stop signs in place at the intersection of Sixth and John Adams, specifically on John Adams, to make that a four-way stop. Our previous Public Works Administrator/ Director Nancy Crashhour was not in favor of that idea and had conducted traffic studies indicating that it wasn't needed. I and our Neighborhood Association think that it is, and I think other neighbors do as well, certainly now that the library is in place there and the senior center, of course, the community center's still always been there, the church, and of course, the fire station. It is a community center. Of course, now we have the concerts, it's even more crowded, lots more children, lots more animals and pedestrian traffic. So, I would like the commission to, at some point, direct the city manager and our public -- our interim Public Works Director?
That's right.
Very good. Very good. To reconsider that decision and simply place two more stop signs on that intersection, to make that a four-way stop, which would match the one that's on Sixth and John Adams, which didn't take that long to get two more stop signs put in years ago. It would slow traffic down, everybody would understand what the stop sign meant instead of the hesitation that goes on now. And I think anybody -- in fact, I've actually walked with Doug and I've walked with Rocky and Kathy on that intersection across Center Street and Washington Street on Sixth, and we are going to get crosswalks on those, finally, on those streets, but certainly I would like to see a four-way stop implemented on Sixth and John Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Usually, we don't discuss things when it comes up, but we do have -- Commissioner Mum apparently has a question.
Have you taken this before the TAC Transportation Advisory Committee?
We have.
Recently?
The first time was probably two years ago.
You might want to revisit that, too.
I think, yeah, I think we could set the process in motion. Does the Transportation Advisory Committee meet during the summer? I don't believe it does.
No, they don't. I think their next meeting's in September.
I think it'd be possible, perhaps, for our city manager and John Lewis to have some discussions about the issues that were there before us at the time and then come before us. I mean, we could take action. We always like to have input from the Traffic Advisory Committee, but they're down during the summer.
I'm not sure what the downside -- I never got the information what the downside was of putting two more stop signs in there, so that was another answer I would certainly have liked to have had. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. And then, William Gifford?
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I used to live one block away from the intersection that Mr. Daniels is speaking of, and I used to be chair of this Neighborhood Association, and I have to really support the concept. Two of his arguments, and I want to diffuse them right away, one of the comment is the concerts in the park, and I understand this just for, you know, a couple of months out of the year, so let that not be an argument, and the fact that the library isn't going to be there forever, we expect. I don't want that to be an argument either. The argument is, as far as I'm concerned, is that there's a lot of people that assume that there's a stop sign there already.
Yeah.
And a lot of -- and so the cross-traffic just assumes that people are going to stop, and they don't always because not a lot of -- the other half of the people don't think that there's a stop sign there. And it's just way too confusing, especially when you've just come from a four-way stop on the two other -- on the neighboring intersections up on Jefferson Street. There's no reason in the world why, I think, we ought not to have that as two additional stop signs on there, and I just want to speak in support of that concept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are the comments we've had. Adoption of the agenda, we are pulling item seven.
C.
Seven C. And so we won't be discussing that. With that, we'll go on with the rest of the agenda. If people want to adopt the agenda, if you want to pull anything off the consent agenda. Turning now, we'll proceed. We've got public hearings before us. AN 1201, emergency sewer annexation for .69 acres at 15172 South Holcombe Boulevard. And Mr. Conkle will be the staff person.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll actually be turning this over to Pete Walter to make that presentation.
Peter Walter will be the staff person.
Good evening, Mayor Neely. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Tonight, the commission will be reviewing two petitions for emergency sewer annexation. The first of these is file number AN 1201. This is an annexation petition for .69 acres at 15172 South Holcombe Boulevard. Exhibit one of your pack, it has a vicinity map indicating the location of this property. It's located directly abutting Holcombe Boulevard within the city's urban growth boundary. The owner of the property, Debbie and Eugene Cardella, are here this evening, and this annexation request is initiated due to a certified failing septic system, and per Oregon revised statutes, properties that are located within 300 foot of the city sewer system are required by law to connect to city sewer when a septic system fails in order to correct the public health emergency that exists. And following the immediate hookup by the Public Works Department to the city sewer, for which the applicants have already obtained permission, they are required to go through the normal annexation process, which includes petition to the city for annexation for connection to all other city services, and then, following the approval of the annexation by the city commission, per our charter and per our Chapter 14 of our code, the annexation is forwarded to the voters of Oregon City for a final vote. And in this case, November 6 is the election date that they will be shooting for. What staff has done is reviewed this annexation petition against our normal criteria or factors for annexation, and we've determined that all of those factors have been met, which is outlined in your staff report. The applicant is not proposing any development of the site at this time. There would be no rezoning of the site. It would remain FU 10 until such time as the applicant or the owner of the property requests any further rezoning. Subsequently, we will have a sewer hookup with county zoning, and the service districts would change. Currently, the site is within the Clackamas Sheriff's Department's jurisdiction. That would change to Oregon City Police Department. This site is served through an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas River Water for water service, which will maintain on the property. So, the water service will not change until the future, when there is development, and there will be negotiations with the water district to change that. So, basically, nothing can occur on this property until there's any rezoning, and none's been proposed, so it will stay county FU 10. The staff has prepared a packet with -- which includes public notices, all of the sewer permits that have been obtained to date, the applicant's petition, comments from Clackamas River Water, who has no conflicts with the application. There's also some emails and acknowledgment of fees for the annexation signed by the owner, and a copy of the HOP agreement, which is the water agreement. If the city commission determines that the factors for annexation have been met, staff will prepare a separate resolution for the upcoming election for you to consider on August 1st. So, what we're doing is separating the land use approval annexation criteria from the decision to send this annexation to the vote. The resolution will set the language for the ballot title, as well as the date for the upcoming election.
I'm going to give some clarification from our attorney. Mr. Kabaisman, I was always under the impression that if it's an emergency annexation of this form, it doesn't necessarily go to the vote of the people.
The way our charter is worded, there aren't exceptions for that.
The question I've got is, what if it fails the vote of the people, and yet it's required to attach into our system?
It's an emergency. Yeah. What we'd have, then, is a conflict between the state health laws, which say you've got to connect, and the state land use laws that said you can't extend sewer beyond the boundaries of a UGB. Actually, you know, we actually wouldn't be in violation of the land use laws. What we would do is, because they're within the UGB already, so we're extending outside the city limits, and I believe the city has a policy of, you know, if you're going to get sewer service from the city, you're going to be in the city. So, we may have to scratch our heads a little bit and figure out how to deal with sewer service to properties outside the city limits, so I don't think there's --
I was just going to say, we do have the ability. We enter into an agreement with an extraterritorial extension of the sanitary sewer to the applicant, to the property owner, if it were to fail. So, we do have the ability to provide that, make sure that we collect the appropriate revenues associated with the extension of that city service to that property, and there's some other language in the agreement about agreement to annexation in the future should that come up and go through this process again. So, we do have the ability to deal with the health hazard regardless of the vote. Obviously, it's more advantageous to have them in the city and avoid these extraterritorial situations.
Commissioner Mum?
And if I could just clarify, one other part of this, too, is that historically, when we brought you annexations, we've put the annexation land use decision and resolution all bundled into one. We've decided that it's -- in order to clarify how the process really works, is that you're actually doing a public hearing. Does it meet, on balance, the land use factors to bring it in? If you decide that they have met, on balance, those factors per our charter, then you approve it. That's the land use decision, which is appealable to Luba. The second action that has to occur based on our charter is that then we need to set a date for the election, and we're going to do that as a separate resolution. So, what you're going to see moving forward is we're going to separate these two so that it's much more clear how the process actually works and that there's not confusion about when is the decision final concerning the land use versus we send it to the vote of the people through a separate action. So, that's the one change that you will see here today.
Okay.
The property owners are probably -- the applicant, he's made a presentation. Do you want to make some additional comments, too, on this particular one? Our public procedure invites you to actually say something if you want to, but he's probably made the application for you. Is that sufficient?
No, what he said, it's sufficient.
That's sufficient, okay. No, I guess I can -- any questions?
Yes.
We've got here -- Commissioner Mum?
Hi. I just had a couple of questions. I want to reiterate, there will be no development, correct? It's not being brought in to develop, correct? I know that was a concern of some of the --
There's a number of other types of review and analyses that would need to be done prior to any rezoning or development of this property. We would need to find concurrence with the transportation planning rule.
Okay.
The park place concept plan to the extent that it applies.
I just wanted to hear very clearly. That's not the reason.
That is not the reason.
So, there's no concerns there. And then, the only thing that they are going to receive from the city is the sewer and the police, correct?
Well, they will receive all administrative city services, so that are applicable to the site, with the exception of Clackamas River Water.
Okay.
If the vote is approved.
If the vote is approved. Right, right, right.
The annexation would result in them being taxed by the city.
Okay.
So, they would get the services.
Okay. All right. So, the other one was, this is not create an island of any kind, right?
This is contiguous with the city limits because of the right-of-way of Holcombe Boulevard and city subdivision on the north side, which creates a contiguous block of property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roth?
Okay. I'm not clear, are there houses on these properties already?
One house on the property. So, they're replacing a previous septic field with a required hookup.
And it's occupied.
I believe it's occupied, yes.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to clarify, the state statute, does it require that we annex?
It requires that when a sewer system, septic system fails and the sewer system within a certain distance, they must connect.
They must connect, but not annex?
Right.
Okay.
Any comments from the public?
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
I was curious, this property, do they have an existing service now from the city's main, or do they extend the sewer to --
They extend the sewer into the property.
To their upstream property limit? Or, okay.
Yeah, they have obtained sewer permit, a construction permit from the city, and they pay their system development charge for sewer, and then, the county issues them a service permit for the property from the property line to the house, so.
So, we won't require them to extend it, you know, to the upstream limit? Isn't that usually the standard that we would require, like the previous developer had to extend it up?
I think they're connecting into the manhole that's already there in Holcombe Boulevard. So, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, the next property owner has that same kind of fair connection.
Yeah. If you're asking whether they extend the line all the way over to the other side of the property, I don't know, but I could ask the owner about that, yeah.
I've got a -- I'll have a question, too, I guess, at this point.
To make myself clear, I just want to make -- and I'm not sure that I know the rule on this, so I'm just, I'm kind of asking, but usually, when a development happens like that, they're required to extend it to the top of their limit. So, on Holcombe Boulevard, they took it to the highest point of their limit, and so I don't know the frontage of this one. I didn't look at this issue, so are they carrying it further so that the next property owner has to do the same? How's that?
Tap right into the existing sewer line per the permit issued by Bob Colson, and so it didn't extend it higher.
Okay.
I'm confused. Are we already providing services?
You hooked up, right? Yes.
There is an existing line in Holcombe Boulevard.
Yeah.
They were able to connect to the existing line because it was in front of their home. So, because this is an emergency situation, we worked with them to provide the hookup and deal with the health safety issue, and now we're coming back to deal with the annexation. As a policy, if we're going to extend services, the policy has been to do the annexation. If the annexation is not successful, we'll deal with it through an extraterritorial extension. Concerning the extension of sanitary sewer line that's in Holcombe, usually, we would require that when you see some type of a redevelopment. If someone comes in to partition their lot or do a subdivision, when they make those frontage improvements, that frontage improvement would include the half-street, which includes water, sewer, sidewalks, curbs. So, in this situation, you know, I would imagine the decision was probably made to not extend it because all they're doing is trying to connect one home.
Right.
So, actually, you're providing the emergency services now?
Correct.
And we have the policy that when we provide services, they get annexed into the city?
Correct.
Okay. If, in fact, the annexation fails, they will still have the service?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. And the sewer cleanout is about 50 feet onto the right-of-way in front of the existing house, so it's not, it doesn't stop at the property line, and, yeah, it's a pretty straight connection.
Okay.
So, you want to speak some more? No.[1227.62][1227.62](Laughter). Okay.
Exactly right.
Okay. Well, we're going to vacate one of those seats because we're going to open to public comment now. And Mr. Fowler?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Just a couple of quick comments. I think in the description of what was going on, you see an interesting dilemma that's created when you have a charter member that says you have to vote on annexations and you have health hazards happen. It's an interesting situation at best. As I look at it, the real result, which could be negative for the city in a sense of revenue, is that if the annexation fails, all the majority of the services are delivered without any tax revenue. So, I just wanted to state that fact as clear as I could, encouraging myself and hopefully our citizens to actually support this annexation.
Support.
Because it will benefit the city in terms of revenue because we, by law, have to deliver the service.
Right.
So, thank you.
At least that service.[1296.62][1296.62](Laughter). No, they'll get a utility bill on that service.
There'll be no --
They'll get a utility bill on that service.
There'd be a very little incentive to ever annex once you have sewers.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other public comment?
I think we did have some, yes. Were those for this one? Oh, they weren't.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do these one at a time. Any other comments or questions, or dialogue among the commission members?
Close the public hearing.
How's that?
Did you close the public hearing?
And I closed the public hearing, but my question still holds.[1337.12][1337.12](Laughter).
No.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion on this?
Yes. But I have a little thing on my way.
Oh, yeah.
So, I move that we approve.
Can't hit that button, it's not working?
It's got a little thing there, but I have my paper here.
Okay. There you go. Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve AN 12-01, emergency sewer annexation for 0.69 acres at 15172 South Holcombe Boulevard. I second that.
This is advisory vote, this is a vote to take it to the vote, this is a vote to take it to the vote of the people?
Mayor Neely, this actually isn't the one that will take it to the vote of the people. This is land use that we say this complies with our city's code of police policy.
Thanks for your correction. And with that, can we have the vote, please? And we'll find out what we've got here. We have four yeses and one no, one no cast by Commissioner Roth. With that, go into the second request for emergency sewer annexation for .3 acres at 1677 Old South Leroy Lane. I presume -- Pete, you're still the person?
Yes. This petition was submitted by Lisa and Peter Jacobson, the owners of the property at 16770 Leroy Lane. It's a triangular-shaped parcel of land close to the end of Leroy Lane, which is located off of Holcombe Boulevard and between Redland, on the north side of Redland Road. They had a similar situation where their septic tank developed a leak, and subsequently, they began the process of connecting to city sewer back in January of this year and coordinated with our Public Works Department for the sewer hookup. This property is a little bit different than that. It is, it's got a county zoning designation of R 8.5, which is an 8,500 square-foot lot county zoning. It's been in the urban growth boundary since the 1979 urban growth boundary expansion. Similar to the previous one, it was within 300 feet of an existing city sewer. They have included in their packet the sewer plans that were submitted to the city for approval. There's no development proposed with this. It's one house. Property is only .3 acres in size. There's no rezoning proposed, and it is also subject to city commission consideration and approval for compliance with our annexation factors, and it also must be forwarded to the voters for final approval, following approval by the city commission. In your packet, we have proposed findings, reasons for decision, and recommendation. This property would be hooked up to city sewer. It would not remain within Clackamas River Water. In fact, they already are on city water today, so that is not going to change. The sewer permits are all in your packet, along with the public notices that were sent out, the applicant's petition, comments from Clackamas River Water, who have no conflicts with the proposal, and also the fee acknowledgment letter signed by the property owner.
This is advisory vote, this is a vote to take it to the, this is a vote to take it to the vote of the people?
No, it's not. Mayor Neely, this actually isn't the one that will take it to the vote of the people. This is land use that we say this complies with our city's [inaudible].
Thanks for your correction. And with that, can we have the vote, please? And, uh, we'll find out what we've got here. Uh, we have four yeses and, uh, and one no, one no cast by Commissioner Roth. With that, go into the second request for emergency sewer annexation for .3 acres at 1677 O South Leroy Lane. I presume, Pete, you're still the person?
Thank you. Yes. Uh, this petition was submitted by Liza and Peter Jacobson, the owners of the property at 16770 Leroy Lane. So the triangular-shaped parcel of land, uh, close to the end of Leroy Lane, which is located off of Holcomb Boulevard, um, and between Redland, on the north side of Redland Road. Uh, they had a similar situation where their septic tank developed a leak, and subsequently they began the process of connecting to city sewer back in, uh, January of this year, and, uh, coordinated with our Public Works Department for the sewer hookup. This property is a little bit different than that. It is, uh, it's got a county zoning designation of R 8.5, which is an 8,500 square foot lot county zoning. It's been in the urban growth boundary since the 1979 urban growth boundary expansion. Um, similar to the previous one, is within, it was within 300 feet of an existing city sewer. They have included in their packet the sewer plans that were submitted to the city for approval. There's no development proposed with this. It's one house. Property is only .3 acres in size. There's no rezoning proposed, uh, and it is also subject to city commission consideration and approval for, uh, compliance with our annexation factors, and it also must be forwarded to the voters for final approval, following approval by the city commission. In your packet, we have proposed findings, reasons for decision and recommendation. This property would be hooked up to city sewer. It would not remain within Clackamas River Water. In fact, they already are on city, uh, city water, uh, today, uh, so that is not going to change. The sewer permits are all in your packet, along with the public notices that were sent out, the applicant's petition, comments from Clackamas River Water who have no conflicts with the proposal, and also the fee acknowledgement letter signed by the property owner, and also some miscellaneous email correspondence. So staff is recommending that the city commission approve A N 1202 and adopt, as you're on the staff report, findings, reasons for decision and recommendations. And we, if you do so, we will, uh, also bring back a resolution for separate approval, forwarding this to the voters, um, for the November 6 ballot. We'll bring that back to you on August 1st.
Mr. Pauling?
Um, just for clarification, and this goes for the previous one as well, are there any current properties on city sewer that are not annexed in?
Yes.
I don't know. I'd have to...
Travers.
No, in this area?
Country villages.
Country villages, no.
I would have to get back to you, because I'm not sure, Country Village, though, never actually comes back into the city. That line, I believe, goes north.
We provide sewer services to them.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure who has owner, I'm not sure who's paying the bill there.
Okay.
I would, I would have to get back to you.
Commissioner Membler?
Um, again, same kind of questions, no development to be proposed, correct?
Right, no rezoning, no development.
No, okay.
And, uh, none could occur unless the applicant initiates a separate request.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they are currently on Oregon City Water, or are they on?
Uh, that is what the applicant indicated to me, yes.
Because, um...
CRW doesn't have any, uh, listing of them as a customer, so...
Yes, I noticed that.
Yeah.
And that, yeah.
It's probably, it's probably, is this, is this in the HOP agreement as well, this area?
This is not part of the HOP agreement.
That may be why.
Could be part of, yeah.
That we would be providing that service because there is no other service provider for water there?
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
There's not so much a question for this, the annexation request, but, uh, you say Clackamas River Water will remain the provider for the, the annexation we just approved.
Oh, the previous one, yeah.
It takes, it takes new development there to extend the city services? Is that what's happened, happens normally?
On the previous one?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Bill has a question.
I think typically, um, when, uh, properties are served by Clackamas River Water, we, you know, take them out and the city provides service, but there's a special HOP, Holcomb Boulevard Park Place Agreement, where the city and CRW has made an agreement based on elevations and the facilities available that...
So normally, where, the, the service switches to the city when we do annexations, that first piece is simply covered by a, that different agreement?
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good clarification.
Uh, any other questions? Comments? Okay. In that case, I'm opening the public hearing, and, uh, we have, we have a request to speak from Mr. Gifford.
Mayor and city commissioners, um, I want to be, I want to understand this more clearly, because the understanding that I have of it is that if these properties are not annexed, that the city will be required, basically, to provide sewer service to them whether they are annexed or not, in which case, the city will be required to, to bear the burden of any costs regarding that, regarding the sewer services, if they are not annexed. If they are annexed, then the property owners will be assessed their fair sewer charges. Is that correct?
That's incorrect.
Sewer is on the utility bill.
On the, on the utility bill.
They will be charged their rates for the sewer service regardless of whether they're annexed or not.
Yes.
This comes down to a question of whether they're within the city receive other services and within, you know, the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District, or within the, the City of Oregon City's Police Department, and, you know, whether or not they pay city taxes or county, or county taxes.
They will, they will be billed the same sewer rate as if they were in the city because we are providing a city service.
What about SDCs?
And this...
The extent, they take actions that result in SDCs, they would be subject to SDCs.
Whether they are annexed or not for sewer.
Yes.
For sewer.
That's part of our package.
That's part of, yeah, that's in the package.
SDCs are dependent upon development. To the extent there's development on this site, they'd have to be in the city, really, because of the zoning.
And just extending the sewer line is not considered development? Because the question was asked twice if there's going to be development.
No, it's not a land use, it's not a land use decision that, that would trigger SDCs in...
It's one house.
You know, they get the one-house SDC, but...
It's still one house, yeah.
You know.
I guess what I want to ask is, what would be the disadvantage of annexing them?
From their standpoint?
No, from the city's standpoint. I mean, you as commissioners, I feel have a responsibility to the city.
Right.
And if it's to the city's advantage to have them annex, I would, I would want to know why it wouldn't be unanimous, that this be put on the ballot and the city encourage this annexation.
I guess you'd have to direct that to the person who ordered the post.
I can do that. Commissioner Roth, why?
The fees are listed here. We have the fees, the SDCs, the sewer annexation application. Everything's listed here. They still have to pay those fees. And they have to pay their water bill.
But they don't have to pay property taxes.
And presumably, they're not receiving the services from the city.
Right.
Covered by those property taxes.
But they're not, but they're not paying taxes.
To the city.
City taxes.
To the city. They're paying taxes to the county.
That's right.
Why wouldn't we want their city taxes?
I feel that that's a personal issue, so...
Well, I mean, you can call it a personal issue, but if it's a part of the dialogue, I, I would think you'd want to, we would want to have that debate, but if you don't want to participate in it, that's okay.
Well, I, I think there's something else going on behind this, so...
Well, as a citizen, I'd love to know what's going on behind it.
Someday you'll find out.
I, I don't understand why the cloak of secrecy there. I mean, if there's something going on that the city ought to know about...
There isn't.
Is it something to be...
I can say I feel there is.
Well, with that, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think we all understand what the issue is, and, uh, with that, we'll make our decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Are you going to close? No, come, come ahead. We'll have you, go ahead, after you speak, go ahead and fill up with one of our forms because we need a record of you. All you have to do, all you have to do is state your name and whether you're or not you're in Oregon City or not. We know the answer to that, but you have, for the record, we need it.
The property owner, and I just was curious more on what you were saying.
No, I understand the reason for the annexation, and I understand the failure of the septic tank and all of that stuff. That's, that's all fine with me. I just want to make sure that we are very, very careful with our annexations in that area especially. We've already gone through several failures of an annexation vote, and so I want to make sure that we're extremely careful with how we're annexing that area. Okay?
We're just hard-working people.
No, I, I understand that, and I understand, but, but as far as I'm concerned, the city is getting their fees for this, and you're going to be paying your water bill, so...
We'd like to come into Oregon City.
Oh, you would?
We'd like it very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have a time there. Uh, Mr., any other comments from the, questions from the commission at this point?
No.
Okay, Mr. Fraser?
Um, well, I just want to comment generally on the policy reasons that you have this, and there are many. And some of them have already surfaced here, and there are others that haven't. Virtually every city where I've been a manager, there's been either a, a policy like this one, or a regret that they didn't have a policy like this one. There, there, as a matter of equity, the property owner, well, from my perspective as a manager, it's difficult to manage properties if the policy doesn't exist and it isn't implemented because what you end up with are enclaves of areas, pockets of areas in larger cities in particular, but where there aren't, uh, there's not a tax base there to support it. But if you've got one of these enclaves, let's say development occurs around you, and you've got one of these pockets that wasn't annexed, but yet you have service, and I think as one speaker mentioned, no incentive to annex. What we found in other cities where we've had this problem is that there, there are these enclaves, these pockets, where there's confusion about who's providing public safety service.
Right, right.
Does the officer on a 911 call to the left side of the street or the right side of the street? Literally.
Yeah, absolutely.
Literally. Then out in the middle of US 40 Highway in Kansas City with a tape measure, trying to figure out whether Independence handles a homicide or we do.
Yeah.
And so, you don't want to have that kind of situation, especially when you've got 911 and emergency service with both fire and police. And then, and then, of course, there's this equity debate about, um, a, a property that's hooked up to municipal sewer or water system is, obviously goes up significantly in value from that connection, that connection which was made available by a public investment of other taxpayers. And so, when that investment occurs, and that person realizes a return on that increase in value, is there any payment coming back to the taxpayers, those of whom are already in the city, who might, much of them who paid for that sewer system to be available in the first instance? So that, that's one of the equity arguments that really hasn't been made, but those are just some of the policy reasons, and they would apply whether it's Oregon City, or, you know, Laramie, Wyoming, or anyplace in between. It's, uh, those are just good public policy reasons to have this kind of a policy and to try to enforce it. So that's all I have.
I, I have one other, if you look at the maps on this, you can very definitely end up with not knowing who's responsible for coverage of that area. Uh, you would have to get out your little tape measures and...
It's a little easier now with GPS, but...
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Do you retain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt A N 12 dash 02, emergency sewer annexation for 0.3 acres at 16770 South Leroy Lane.
Second? Any comments from the commission before the additional discussion? Can I have the roll call, please?
Oh, you have...
Or, excuse me, the votes.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry about that. You know, it was a lot faster when you just said what we were going to do. Uh, there are any votes, are four in favor, one against, and Commissioner Roth voting no. With that, we'll go ahead and proceed on to our general business. We have before us second reading of ordinance 12-1005, modifying the composition of the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission. Mr. Underwood?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is just the second reading. We had the first reading at our last meeting, um, to modify the composition of the Urban Renewal Commission to seven members, and there is a, um, I guess an attrition schedule as part of that, uh, modification, and so it's just before you tonight to have the second reading.
Do we want additional discussion on this motion, or somebody want to put forward a motion?
I move to approve second reading and adoption of a proposed ordinance number 12 dash 1005, modifying the Urban Renewal Composition, Urban Renewal Commission Composition.
Second.
And Commissioner, uh, it seems to have disappeared, but Commissioner Mum has seconded before, before you finished your motion, okay?
Oh, I have to wait, I'm sorry.
You can have the vote.
I was doing very well.
And I'm looking forward to where I can vote. I haven't had any place to vote yet. I'm going to vote.
No?
I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote aye?
Aye.
Well, there goes.
We should have the reading first.
And we need, oh, we need a reading first.
Reading first, technicalities.
Uh, withdraw my vote.
Technicalities.
It's good you're here, Bill.
We try, of course, uh, now, I'm trying to find the actual one because the...
Rocky's phone has it.
I have.
You have a hard copy?
Yeah. Heck, yeah, I do. The paper man.
Uh, let's see, and it doesn't have the title. I apologize, um, that's not that one. Here we go. Ordinance number 12 dash 1005, an ordinance modifying the composition of the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission.
Now we vote?
You vote? And a unanimous vote in favor of the second reading. And with that, we'll proceed on to, um, 7B, a license agreement to allow the operation of the end of the Oregon Trail Center. Um, staff's persons, Mr. Archer, I might mention that both Commissioner, Commissioner Smith and myself were involved in discussions with the, uh, with the Clackamas Heritage Partners and, and staff on this issue, and, uh, somebody had some questions and so forth. And with that...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, at your June 20th meeting, you reviewed a draft of a license agreement to operate the end of the Oregon, the end of the Oregon Trail Center. At that discussion, at that meeting on the 20th, you had some feedback, uh, some, some requested amendments to the agreement. Those have been, those have been made and are, um, in your information, you've got both a redline copy, which shows you the changes, and then the clean version of that. And I'll just summarize very quickly, very briefly, the, the changes that were made in response to the commission's direction from the last meeting. Under the section of recitals, uh, letter E was added, which, um, acknowledges that a condition of the, the license agreement is that a member of, of the Oregon City Commission will be appointed to the, to the Board of Directors of Clackamas Heritage Partners. Letter F was added under recitals, which is, um, an acknowledgement that the licensee will, um, will invest or commit at least $20,000 of the, uh, of their funding that they've received from grants towards improvements at the center. Now, their intention, we understand, is to, to probably invest significantly more than that, but that sets a minimum standard, um, and that we also will agree to continue to work towards seeking additional funding and, and ongoing maintenance of the site. Uh, under the agreement section, number two, there were just a few wording changes made, just to basically clarify, uh, the approvals that were necessary before any improvements to the site are made, or any changes are made in, in programming. Number three was added, which, um, puts a provision in that the licensee shall seek permission from the city first before it applies for any additional grants that would be used for the, the purposes outlined here. Um, under, under the quarterly report, number five, the last sentence was added, which just clarifies that in addition to reporting information, the licensee will include an update on their financial, uh, information to the city. Uh, and then, um, let's see, actually, that is, so that, that is all of the changes. And, uh, as you said, Mayor Neely, we, we met with, uh, members of Clackamas Heritage Partners, and I believe that we've addressed in this updated agreement, uh, the concerns that were raised at the, at the commission meeting, uh, and, uh, those are reflected in your, in your amended license agreement you've got before you. I do need to call to your attention, I believe, um, you all received some emails today, uh, you may or may not have seen those. There was some written testimony that was submitted today by Nancy Walters. She was not able to make it to the meeting and asked that we submit her information to the record. I don't know whether you've all read that.
Uh-uh, I haven't. I haven't been on my email today.
And if, if not...
Oh, it's on here.
Um, Mayor, whatever your pleasure is, um, if you'd like to read that, or if you'd like me to read it, or if you don't find it necessary, but you've got the written information, whatever you prefer.
What I would suggest is that perhaps you read it, and we have perhaps our city attorney respond to it.
That would, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. So, so the public knows what's in the email, and all certainly can have a legal response.
So this, this was received today, and it, I will read verbatim, it says, "Testimony of Nancy Walters, Oregon City resident, July 18th, 2012, Oregon City Commission meeting for this agenda item. I have several comments to make in response to the June 20th hearing on this matter. I remain convinced this is a public contract that is subject to competition. During the June, excuse me, during the June 20th hearing, Attorney Ed Sullivan stated this is a management agreement, implying it is not subject to public contracting law. A contract can be defined as a voluntary, deliberate, and legally binding agreement between two or more competent parties. Contracts are usually written, but may be spoken or implied, and generally have to do with employment, sale, or lease, or tenants, or..." do with employment, sale, or lease, or tenancy. A contractual relationship is evidenced by, one, an offer, two, acceptance of the offer, and, three, valid, legal, and valuable consideration. Each party to a contract acquires rights and duties relative to the rights and duties of the other parties. Later in the hearing, Scott Archer said that this is not a management agreement but a licensing agreement, indicating further confusion. A licensing agreement can be defined as a written contract under which the owner of a copyright, know-how, patent, or other intellectual property allows a licensee to use, make, or sell copies of the original. Whether you call it a management agreement or a licensing agreement, it is a public contract. Despite no exchange of money, there is city consideration, including staff time, utilities, and maintenance of all the grounds and buildings according to Commissioner Smith's comments. Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan made note of the nonprofit status of Clackamas Heritage Partners, also implying that nonprofits are not subject to public contracting laws. I wanted to be sure everybody understands public contracting law does apply when contracting with nonprofits. Mr. Sullivan also stated CHP is, quote, "probably a sole source," unquote, implying that public contracting law is satisfied. Again, I wanted everyone to understand there's a clear process for making sole source determination that involves criteria, findings, and decision. If this has occurred, please make the record available to the public. Relative to the proposed agreement itself, I agree with comments made by Commissioner Smith. I would also reiterate that in the agreement, the responsibility of each party, including the city, are vague or nonexistent. Scott Archer stated that the, that discussions had taken place with CHP and agreements had been made. These should be specified as much as practicable in the agreement, especially in light of prior issues and conflicts. Furthermore, Mr. Sullivan complained that my testimony had been submitted at noon the day of the hearing, as if it was not timely enough to be considered. Mr. Sullivan and city staff have had far more time to consider this matter than the public. When I checked last Friday, the agenda for this, for this hearing had not even been posted, and when I checked yesterday, the agreement was not posted. The public should have more time to review agenda items, and in any event, my testimony was timely. I strongly urge the commission to approach this matter responsibly and comply with Oregon public contracting laws. Thank you for, for your consideration. And a written copy of that has been entered into your, into the record.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Commissioners, I'll, I'll give you my response to that, that I don't believe this is subject to the public contracting code, and there are really two reasons for that. First, there's a definition of public contract, and the public contract means a sale, or other disposal, or a purchase, lease, rental, or other acquisition by a contracting agency of personal property, services, including personal services, public improvements, and it goes on. Noticeably missing is real estate, and there are, and, you know, there's cases out there to talk about that, that real estate isn't subject to the public contracting code. And what this is, is a license agreement, and, and Ms. Walters indicated one aspect of licensing. There's also, under property law, a license is essentially a permit to enter onto property. It's, it's not a lease, it's not a sale of property, it's, to get fancy, a use of luxury, right? It allows people to use the property. You know, and, and I sent an email earlier that talks about three different sort of ways of looking at it. If a neighbor comes to you and says, "Hey, you know that weedy patch in your backyard? I'd really like to plant some tomatoes there." You know, you have a number of different ways to handle it. One, that's a great idea, I was going to do that, I'll pay you 10 bucks an hour to plant them, and I'll go take, you know, and you probably have an employee, you know, you're getting her, you're purchasing her personal services to do the work. That would be subject to public contracting. Another alternative, that sounds great, I'll lease it to you, you pay me $100 a month, and you get to do whatever you want with the tomatoes. That's, that's a lease, not subject to, to public contracting. The third one is, eh, you know, I don't care, go ahead, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with you doing it, I just want to make sure that, you know, you don't later claim adverse possession, that you got to use it. Basically, all you're doing is doing a permission, giving them permission to use property. That's, that is essentially what we've done here. We're, we're allowing them to come onto the property to operate the end of the Oregon Trail Center. And, and this type of license is the type of, is a type of agreement that's not subject to public contracting. To the extent we are acquiring anything, if you were to make an argument, it would, it would be essentially personal services. There's a specific provision, you know, if we wanted to say, "Well, we want you to do A, B, C, D, E, we want you to keep the, the place open from 10 o'clock till 6 o'clock through, from July to September, we want you to do these programs," then, you know, there's more of an argument that actually what you're acquiring are their services, their personal services, managing it and putting on those programs. And there's a provision under law that talks about any procurement of goods or services not exceeding $5,000 may be awarded in any manner deemed practical or convenient by the contracting agency, including by direct selection or award. The, the email that we got indicated, well, the city's giving them other things, and, we need to talk about the compensation there. The way the public contracting code is written, it's really, deals with dollar amounts and doesn't talk about exchange of, of values. And, you know, as far as I can tell from the agreement, there are no specific, we're going to give you anything more, as I understand the agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, it really is a matter of permission, that they want to operate it, and we're willing to say, "Okay, get the insurance, cover yourself, let's make sure you're going to take it seriously." But we're not, you know, providing money to them, we're not providing other services to them that we wouldn't otherwise provide, maintenance and, and other types of things. In that case, I, I think it would fit under the small, small procurement and that would allow direct selection. So, that, that's sort of my understanding of, of the agreement. Happy to answer any questions about the public contracting law.
We'll, we'll start with the commission questions first. Mr. Smith, you're on.
Okay, in terms of the last comment, we're, we weren't providing, um, we're providing services to that building now, in the sense of garbage and maintenance and all that, but we weren't in the previous. So, in a way, they are getting that, which is something that they weren't, that the facility wasn't getting before, the user wasn't getting before, is that...
You know, it, as I understand it, it's not part of the, you know, it's certainly not written into the agreement. Would we be providing the maintenance in agreement, or maintenance and trash removal whether these guys are, are there or not? And if, if we would be providing whether they're there or not, then I don't think it's, it's necessarily part of the agreement. They may be counting on it, but if we would, if we were to stop providing that, we wouldn't violate the agreement.
And there probably is money changing hands, it's just not going from us to them, it would be coming from them to us through this commitment of the grant. Is that a problem?
From them to us?
They're making a commitment of $20,000 to us.
Where they're going to put in...
Is that not considered rent?
That's not, I, I don't think that's how...
I mean, I don't, I'm just saying...
No, it's, it's an interesting question, you know, usually when we're talking about public contracting...
It's a payment to us, you know, in exchange for using the building.
Right.
I don't know how that reads...
And if it's a lease, it's not public contracting, and it's real estate which is specifically exempted.
Right.
If, you know, where it might get a little dicier is if somebody were to say, "That's actually public improvement," that they're going to build a new building on the site and use that $20,000. Then, then we may have an issue. If it's maintenance, repair, that, you know, that, but I believe the dollar amount we've got to get to there is fairly significant for public improvements, yeah.
Can you speak more about that?
Yes.
Because I think one of the things that they're committing to do as part of this grant is to install signage and to improve that space. So, in that sense, the $20,000 right here doesn't speak to that, but...
Right.
The, the intent of CHP is to do some improvements on the ground, I know.
And I believe it's, I want to say about $250,000 before you start getting to the requirement.
We probably aren't going to...
Yeah.
We're clear on that.
They're probably are going to get to that.
Right, and, and I want to make sure the number's, because I could be wrong. Ceptions. Um, I'm, I'm not finding it here, but one of the things that we could add is that the CHP will follow any public, public contracting requirements to the extent they make public improvements. We have an obligation to do that as the owner, so to the extent they go get funds and want to put up a sign, and it, and yours to our benefit, we need to make sure they follow public contracting law. And we could, we could add a specific clause that prior to installing any public improvements, the CHP will work with the city to ensure all public contracting laws are followed.
Now, would that, is there a money amount, I mean, that's what you're looking for, right?
That's what I'm looking for, and my memory was that it's fairly significant, um, and I'm just not finding, I was looking at the personal services and the...
That would apply, that would apply to the grounds and, and anything within the buildings, too.
Yes. Um, you know, I was looking at the idea, are we providing any money to them, looking at it from the flip side of them going back to us, is, you know, that's not typically what we worry about.
Right.
Mayor, you have some people... See, I have a little hard time visualizing...
I think he was trying to get Commissioners first.
Oh, yeah. I put my left...
I was just going to suggest that, that the city attorney would have a little more time to look for that number while people are speaking.
Well, I'll still pose a question. The question is this, that, I have a hard time going through a bidding, how, how we do bidding if the, if the money is being provided to us by the entity. I mean, I don't know how we bid out if...
That you're going to pay us.
I want you to provide and operate operations for our facility, and I want you to pay us. How do we make the decision as to who we're going to select, if anybody's going to come up and volunteer that?
Yeah.
That's a good problem.
It's a hard, it's a hard one for me to, and that's where I had the, the problem with the argument.
Yeah. And I, I think the argument doesn't go anywhere with the management contract itself. The problem would come if CHP got a grant for $100,000 to put up a new building, put up a sign, and pave the parking lot. Then, you know, because it's only a license, those improvements would be our property, and essentially, you know, they're, they're doing it. And there's an element of trying to get the least cost...
Sure.
As part of the bidding, there, you know, there's also an element of, you know, protecting public dollar, which doesn't really come into the equation there. But there's also, you know, a variety of other governmental programs, whether it's small businesses, local businesses, that they, we try and encourage through the public contracting process.
Any other questions from members of the commission? He's going to be looking for something, and we can open this up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And with that, I have, I'll have both Kevin Hunt and Tom O'Brien come forward, please.
My name's Kevin Hunt, I live in Oregon City. This is, I have probably more questions than I do comments, because I'm, I'm about as confused as everybody else. But there's, there's three things that basically concern me, and I guess two of them could be kind of lumped together. And one has to do with this whole notion of whether this is something that should be put out for more competition. I understand the mayor's concern, well, this is more like the, more like reverse bidding, I guess. But nonetheless, it seems to me that Clackamas Heritage Partners wouldn't be pursuing this if they didn't have something to gain from it. And I'm concerned about some past history here. It's, in, in reading this agreement, there are some generic and general clauses, which obviously makes sense, that the Clackamas Heritage Partners will follow all state and local laws and regulations, et cetera, ordinances, blah, 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 in their management. But, but it seems to me that the city's getting sued right now because of some arrangements in the past where some, certain concessionaire was allowed to operate, and there's a city ordinance that prohibits this operation, and for some 10 years or something, the city tolerated this. And if, if my, if my memory is correct, the rents that were paid did not erode to the city, they erode to Clackamas Heritage Partners. Am I right about that? Now, why isn't there something in this agreement that prevents this from happening again? I, I'm entirely suspicious of what's going on here because of that. I do not understand how the city commission can just go ahead and enter into an agreement like this with that history when the city's being sued by somebody because the city won't allow that person to operate a concession, yeah, on the street, because it violates the city ordinance after allowing for 10 years such a concession to operate on this property being managed by Clackamas Heritage Partners who were violating this ordinance and were collecting the rent. Why wasn't, and it wasn't going to the city? And here we are presented with this, "Hey, let's do this again, let's provide this opportunity again." And I just have to look at, again, I have to look at the prior history and the parties involved, and this, this, you know, this may be legal, I'm not saying what you're doing isn't legal, but I think it stinks, I think it smells. There's, it just doesn't feel good to me. And I know the intentions are good, I know everyone has great intentions, but we have to look at what's already happened here, and I just don't think there's been enough transparency involved. That's why, that's why other organizations should be approached to see if they can offer what Clackamas Heritage Partners can. Probably nobody can. Probably CHP, probably this is a sole source situation. But if that's the case, I agree with Ms. Walters, go through the property terminations, decide that that's the case, and then, and then go ahead and, and grant this. But I would also request that you specifically address this issue of these concessions. I mean, I don't think that this, this, this organization should be allowed to, to circumvent city ordinance and, and benefit monetarily from it, and set the city up again for another lawsuit. My second comment was simply this, it seems to me what you've done makes some sense as far as protection by having a requirement that someone from the city commission be appointed to the CHP Board of Directors, but on the other hand, I see all kinds of potentials for strange conflicts here. For example, if there's a requirement that CHP seek your permission before they can apply for additional grants, that would mean that one of you would be voting both on the Board of Directors of CHP and as a city commissioner with respect to that grant, and I haven't even tried to sort that out as to the legality of that, but that seems like it really, I just think this needs a lot more thought, is all I'm saying. And we all want the, the place to operate again, and we want it, want it done in good fashion again. I'm not, please, please understand, I'm not casting aspersions, I'm not suggesting that there's something underhanded going on. I'm just saying, given the history of this, it doesn't feel very good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes, Mayor Neely, and City Commissioners, Tom O'Brien, resident of Oregon City. I spent a lot of time going through the packet for both June 20th and tonight, and perhaps I overlooked it, but is there a term, a time term on this agreement?
Yes.
And what is it?
December 18.
Through the end of 2013?
It's 18 months.
All right. The other thing that didn't jump out at me is that, again, because of past considerations, is there anything in there that's a non-performance penalty for either party, which would be typically part of an agreement or a contract? I didn't recall seeing anything.
I don't know.
There's no specific non-performance agreement, but the city retains the authority to revoke the license agreement at any time, for any reason.
What if the CHP feels the city hasn't provided sufficient maintenance and cleanup for the restrooms and all the additional things that we're going to be responsible for now that the facility would be open? There's going to be a lot more cost to the citizens and the taxpayers, and, you know, we could again find ourselves if we don't have something in there, you know, just backing away may not be the only recourse we should be looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Rocky, is that your time that you used already?
No, no.
Karen Maury and Rocky Smith. But Karen, will you come forward, please?
I still Rocky gets to stay here.
Yeah, Rocky gets to stay. I'm not sending by you.
But he did send by me.
All right. Karen Maury, I live outside the city limits of Oregon City, inside the Urban Growth Battery, and I'm an avid believer in Oregon City as a heritage destination. I'm going to go kind of from the macro to the micro here. I believe people arrived in the Oregon Territory, which was the culmination of manifest destiny in multiple ways. The Oregon Trail captures the imagination. Clackamas Heritage Partners can tell that tale, and that facility, with or without the lovely bonnets, is eye candy. You go on the internet, you look at any search for Oregon City and heritage tourism...
Or Oregon.
Or Oregon, and you see that facility with or without its bonnets. I am a part of another organization that tells the story of what you did after you got here. I truly, truly, truly believe that Clackamas Heritage Partners can tell the story, bring the tourists to Oregon City, bring the dollars, bring the people to shop in our businesses, come see us in Oregon City. Down to the micro, and I've... Down to the micro, and I've only shared this with Commissioner Smith, I have a minor concern over a seated city commissioner on their board. It negates the vote of that seated city commissioner. If we appoint a seated city commissioner as an ex officio member to the Clackamas Heritage Partners Board, they will be privy to the discussion, the concerns, whatever. They will retain their ability to vote at a city commission meeting. I do not believe a seated, elected city commissioner should be a voting member of any board that actually has any influence over how city funds are set. I would suggest that, as you consider this, one of your elected city commissioners become an ex officio member to be informed on anybody that you're interacting with, but that no elected city commissioner actually be an appointed voting member, because you could end up in a two-two situation as that fifth commissioner loses their vote because they have a conflict of interest.
I have Commissioner Smith next, but I was wondering if you'd, because our attorney is, put his name on the list, he may, he may have some things that might direct any other conferences.
He's gonna get about four more questions.
Well, that's fine.
Let me see if I can eliminate one we left with, and possibly one that you're gonna be asking. The first one is invitations to bid, the full formal process is required for above $100,000. Lower than $100,000 is, is a much more informal process, involves competitive quotes for public improvement. So that's the, the question about how much money. The other thing I want to address, because I heard twice, was a conflict of interest issue. And the, the Oregon Conflict of Interest Law, ORS 244, is specifically concerned about financial conflicts of interest and accepts out of the, the terms of actual and potential conflicts of interest if you happen to sit on the board of a 501(c)(3) organization. So just because, and, and we've confirmed that CHP is a 501(c)(3) organization, so you, you would not have a conflict, you would not have a legal conflict of interest in voting on something that came before you if you participated before. Whether you felt comfortable doing it, that's, that's a whole nether kettle of fish, but legally, there's not a conflict of interest to sit on both boards and make decisions about the other one. The, the basic concept is, it's about self-dealing, and because it's a nonprofit, we don't have that same concern.
Thank you.
And now you're up.
Okay.
And you still on.
I might be wrong. I thought at one time CHP wasn't actually class, they were, they weren't the regular 501(c)(3).
C3.
But they were another, see, always been? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, we've asked a lot of these questions many times already, and I, I feel like I've gotten now at least two or three times responses from the attorney on several of these questions. One is the, the board position, which I, I have concerns about, and I, I've, we've talked about it. And I, I think that, you know, Kevin spoke about the, um, bringing in other, and other businesses essentially to run operations in, in, on the property. At least in this agreement, there's a couple places that I feel, you know, deal with that. One, which is, um, operation of EOT, EOT centers shall be in compliance with all, you know, state, federal, local regulations. That accounts for, you know, the problem is we didn't follow it originally. But that's in there. And the other is, um, the, it says, where did I mark it? Basically, any, any changes in, um, any undertaking of physical improvements to the site or significant changes to the activities need to be approved by us. So I think that would fall under that. Um, you know, we, we, we have the ability to, to yank this at any moment, for any reason, those included. The, um, so I feel fairly confident about that. I still have major concerns, or we wouldn't have still been talking about this. I mean, we all have the same concerns, but I'm feeling like we're getting close to, to being able to work this out. The only, oh, and then the other question from Tom was length of agreement, and then there was another question about, um, what we're providing, CHP, and if they're not happy about the amount of services we're providing or et cetera. And at least in one place here, it says licensee has not entitled any compensation, composite, compensation from the owner. So if we stop doing anything there, and we have an obligation, because it's a city park, to do stuff there, too. But in terms of us doing anything, if CHP calls and says mow the lawn, we say, well, you know, it's on our chart to deal with the park, but we're not obligated to do anything for them.
That's correct.
You know, I mean, we're obligated to take care of the city park, and we'll do that. But, but if somehow our budget says, you know, at a certain date we run out of toilet paper, you know, I don't know. But, I mean, you know, to some degree, it's a city park, and we're gonna have to do that anyway. But I don't think that we're obligated to do anything in respect to, to CHP. So I, I feel, I feel like those, in my opinion, have been answered, and I'm probably the one that's most, been most critical of this, and I feel okay with that. The only last lingering thing that I see on here is, is the question that you just answered, which I guess was $100,000, which is a little bit more in the ballpark of what we're, they're talking about repainting the hoops at a cost of $40,000, talking about doing some other improvements in the site, and if those happen, we could be getting up there at some point, I don't know. So that is, I guess, a, a new thing to be thinking about. The other piece is, we have, you know, really been cautious about going into any partnership without having some idea on a regular basis what the financial status is of CHP, because we had no clue to what degree CHP was in need of funds, and then all of a sudden, the doors were closed. This agreement specifies something to that, but I think it's very general. And I don't know if it's too general for my taste or not. It says the written quarterly report, this is on number five, "At the end of every quarter, licensee shall provide a written report to the city manager regarding the activities, programs, and other significant actions undertaken by the licensee at the end of the Oregon Trail Center. The written report will include an update to the city on licensee's financial status." That's pretty basic. I mean, that could be, we're not bankrupt. I mean, they're telling us their status, that doesn't tell me much. So I don't know if we need to say something more specifically than just your financials. I mean, what is that gonna be? And what are we expected to see from them to, to know that, okay, they're not gonna close the doors tomorrow?
Yeah. And I, we, I touched base with the, the community service director about this question, and part of it was, we don't know what they, they put together, and, you know, what, what, what is really necessary to, to see this. And part of it may be a negotiation with CHP of saying, here's what we want. And, you know, we have the ability, we have the hammer of saying, we wanna see this, or we're revoking it.
And without going into great detail, this one is a confusing one. Because the, the financial, I've never, you know, I, I, I've never been able to understand any financial reports I've seen from CHP. And part of it's not, not because they're not accurate, but because they're also operating visitor's center, separate from this. And they, they get funding from the county to provide operations of the visitor's center. Some of the funding they get to the county is to programming for the visitor's center and for other things, and staffing. But when they take on this other component, I don't think there's a clear separation between how each, I mean, the, the staff is shared essentially, the, 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 well, I don't know. I mean, it wasn't, so if I'm not right, tell me. But these are things we need to know, and we don't know. I've never known, and I used to be unemployed.
Yes. Check them out.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, let, let me finish with these questions, because you all are on next, so let them go ahead.
So I guess without going into that, I, I guess, when, when I see financials, I wanna be able to know how those are separated pieces, and I have never been able to understand It's, it's extremely confusing, because the partnerships, you know, the partnership that the visitor's center has is through the county and not with us at all. And the county uses our building. And so it, it's confusing, even to people that, that aren't tied to it. So I think it's, it's extremely hard sometimes to look at those and understand what funds are going to what, and.
And, you know, we didn't put much specifics in here, in part because, you know, it may make sense to be flexible, there may be times when it's, we want to know every detail. And there may be times when, you know, we've got, we know the grants are there.
Right.
And we know doors are gonna be open for, for a while.
Right.
And, and we can certainly include it in here. The other experience I have when I get involved in things, usually, it takes me a while to get the big picture, and then once I do, it's like, okay. And now I only need this more limited amount of material to keep, to make sure I'm, I'm still okay. And that, you know, we, we can put more in here, or we can work with CHP as, as it moves forward, to make sure you get the information that you need, and, you know, you're, you're gonna have to stand atop of us to make sure that what's, what you're getting makes sense.
Yeah.
Next on our list is, excuse me, because for one thing, he was wanting some information, and we have on our list Dan Towar, and you may bring somebody with you if you wish.
And can answer perhaps some of the concerns of Commissioner Smith?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. I'm gonna also start global and get very specific. Why should, why should allow us to, to enter in this agreement? Couple reasons. One, visitors are coming, history is very important to our city, and we serve the public there, we have insurance liability, we have all the things as a nonprofit. We're willing to donate an awful lot of time and proceeds to this effort. And in terms of maybe answering some of the questions, and I appreciate the process and the question you've gone to, the clarify amounts and those type of things. But we, we do not have anything to gain, except to serve as a volunteer. I'm, I'm really getting tired of suspicion in the past. We're never gonna move forward as a community with that. We've followed everything we've been asked by the city in relationship to the concessionaires agreement. That's all I'm gonna say on that. I know there's an issue in a lawsuit. We have done everything we were asked, when we were asked, to do it. Terms of transparency, it's another issue that I, quite frankly, I'm tired of hearing about. We are transparent as we can be. We've been here three meetings, we've taken an awful lot of heat, we've taken a lot of questions, we've met with the staff, we've met with you. We have offered everything to the city. Tell us anything you want, we'll give it to you. You tell us what you want in that agreement, we'll give you quarterly financials, they're by a QuickBooks program that a many businesses run. We have every dollar categorized by every different account, whether it be the visitor's center operation, or any other operation we do. It's requirements for our grants, Gale keeps excellent financial records. And if you wanna see them on a weekly basis, tell me. You wanna see them on a quarterly basis or monthly basis, tell me. Put it in the agreement, we'll give them to you. They're right out of our computer. If there's any misunderstandings on how to read them, or what they mean, be happy to go through it. Be happy to go through it. There is nothing hitting, hidden in those reports at all. Full transparency. Our board is made up of a lot of business people, and they wanna see those reports. So in terms of transparency, don't blame lack of knowledge on transparency. Just a little bit of history. We sought permission before we applied for any grants. We came here, we have been transparent about that. We gave every one of you our business plan, we gave every one of you those grant applications. They're entered into public record if they're, to you. We have been as transparent about this process as we can. We have been upfront about our bias, which is to get that place used by the visitor, okay? I mean, we haven't been shy about that, but we have not been anything but transparent in the process. We have now the privilege of having money, we just wanna do something good for the community. We've been successful in getting the grants, and we, we, we will follow, if, if, if we can paint the hoops, great, but time is waning. If we don't get them painted by the end of August, we're toast for, for Oktober convention. We will never get it done before next June. The, as stated, the agreement is to really to build trust. We've, we've really wanted, and I appreciate the meetings we've had, I really do. It's not long term, it's through the end of October, or, excuse me, to the end of next year. And then we can assess it and see how it's going. And, and I agree with, you know, what happens if there's something wrong, well, you can tell us to stop, and we can, we'll, we stop. I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. So I'm really open to the financial reporting we've offered. We, it wasn't even in there, we were the one that asked for it. We asked for it, we were the one to put it in the agreement. We said, no, you, you want and should have more accountability from us. So we, we called Scott, said, put this in there. Now, if you want a monthly or quarterly, we'll do whatever you want. This, let's not, let's just not delay this anymore. Guys, if we delayed anymore, we're gonna miss another year. So do you wanna address any thing on how you do your financials, just for clarification?
Yeah. So I use classes in the QuickBooks, and so I have a management every program.
He just wants to know.
Oh, Gale, sorry, my name, Gale Yazzalino. So anyway, it's very easy, but the thing is, Rocky, the financials that I gave you was everything together, because when I do the big classes, it's sheets and sheets, and most people look at it and hand it back to me. So unless you wanna sit down, I know where every penny is, and I'm willing to share it and show it, because, you know, I wanna be around a while, and I'm, the other thing I wanna say is, I have no, I don't know why we're doing this. It is not to, for us, it is for those visitors that are coming. So that's all.
It makes it a little bit more complicated, but I definitely think, I mean, the visitor's center and the EOTIC has to be looked at as two separate operations, not the same. And I think that's.
Well, financially, it does, however. The thing is, the visitor isn't gonna separate it out, and they're not caring. But they come for the end of the Oregon Trail, and we give them everything else. And both Travel Oregon and TDC have, heritage is one of their little missions, and we fit in perfectly, we're the visitor's center that gives them an experience. So when you look at it, you have to give them everything. Now financially, yes, we can separate it out a little bit, but we have to give them everything.
It's amazing how many people come, and I think you're right. From an accounting standpoint, we do, and we have to account for those dollars that TDC gives us. But when that visitor pulls into the parking lot, they don't know this is the visitor's center. Yes, it is, and this is the end of the trail. And the, the gals and guys down there that are volunteering and part of our staff do a fabulous job calming people down when they know they can't see the place.
They don't care that we're sleeping.
And they, they're ambassadors beyond belief down there, because people are, are upset because they don't know the struggles we've been through, and they, quite frankly, don't care. They just wanna have a better experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ma.
Well, what I'd like to say is, there's bad history on both sides, both the city and CHP. The city has to take ownership also, because they let things go. But you have to realize that you have a new commission, and we do keep an eye on things very closely. And to that. And to that extent, I want to remind us, this is only for 18 months. We will revisit it. And we have a new finance guy. And, you know, he's just sitting there and he really hasn't had much interaction. I'll bet you, I'll bet you, Rocky, he can figure out the finances and explain it to us, you know, in English. What do you think?
I'm sorry, what? That was all her.
That was me. Yes, yeah. I think you could probably explain it to us in English, right? I mean, David Wimmer, God bless him, he was great. But sometimes I was like, oh, my God, what are we talking about? So just, you know, I just want to throw those things out. There was bad things on both the city's side and CHP's side. Everybody has stepped up to take ownership. I think everybody has. It's an 18-month contract. And, you know, we got a new finance guy. Let's throw him in there. Thank you.
Commissioner Polly.
Yes. In regards of what CHP has to gain with this, I feel that they're gaining the ability to get, to give the gift of the grant that they did all the legwork for. They did all the research for. They did the work for. And they're giving back to the city. And we're going to be able to utilize an existing resource that's already been paid for, that's already there, and utilize it for the visitors. I've seen letters from visitors, letters from citizens that want it open. I do understand the history. And if I get in a car accident, I'm not going to stop driving. I'm just going to be a heck of a lot more careful. And I think the changes in the agreement address that. And it's important to have everything in that agreement spelled out to make sure that, you know, things are going to be good for everybody. I do think that's very, very important.
I've gotten, somebody took the trouble to visit from two groups, to visit out of the state to look up who the mayor of Oregon City was after they visited the Oregon, ended the Oregon Trail interpretive center. One was from Texas, one was from Missouri. There's nothing I could say to the person in Texas, simply because there was nothing I could say to the person in Texas. I mean, he said he came to the end of the Oregon Trail and he said it was the real end. And I could not tell him what we were going to do. I had no basis for saying anything. The last one is more recent, within the last three weeks. And I told them that we were in the process of negotiating an agreement to get operations going at that facility. I had something to say to that person. But, and so you're not able to calm everybody down. And I, I don't want to be put in that position again. And I hope we're not going to put ourselves in that position again. I think we've done a lot of work on this particular contract. We've got a lot of leverage. If there are things that come up that we didn't foresee, we have tremendous leverage in this contract. And personally, I have no desire to postpone it, to put in any other words into it. I think we've got the capability of doing that at a later date if we need to, to keep the agreement going. Mr. Smith? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. And I've been in many, many meetings down there with visitors coming in. And that's, it just really bothers you because you just sit there and, I mean, they're coming in every day. So I, I've been, you know, really critical of going through this process. We've had to do it. But I will also say, I think that we're in a point that I feel fairly comfortable. I do think that CHP has done an incredible amount of work to, to come, to come to our bar, raise themselves to our bar. And if that doesn't continue, we can, we can resolve it. I feel confident in that. But I also am tired of an empty building that, that no one can see. It does, you know, we all extremely love the history of the city. And, you know, they are down there every single day. They have to deal with those people every single day. I've had, I've been down there, I don't know, maybe a dozen times in meetings. And I got to say, I'm really thankful that when people are banging on the door during a meeting, that I'm not the one that has to get up and
Figure it out.
And figure it out. Because I've worked in that environment before. I've worked at that interpretive center before when it opened. And that is not an easy job. It's not an easy job to, and really, it's completely out of their hands. I think we're, we've made a lot of progress. I feel comfortable. I think, you know, we have a little bit of the summer left that we can hopefully try to help some of these visitors that are coming in. And, and also have the ability to start tackling a building that needs a lot of work. And I think we can make some progress with it. And if everything works out, we take the next step. So I think, I think it's pretty clear that every one of us as commissioners are going to be extremely, we're going to be on it. I mean, we're, this is something that's important to us. We don't want it to screw up. So we're going to be asking a lot of questions. I think there's no doubt that city staff aren't going to be keeping an eye on everything that happens down there. So I don't think that, you know, there's going to be a lack of eyes in terms of, you know, what's going forward. So I think with that, I just, I guess Commissioner Roth has something to say, but then hopefully we can make a motion.
I just have a question. Do we need to delineate in this agreement that the commissioner will not be a voting member of their board?
Our...
I don't, I don't think so.
My standpoint, no. I mean, we, I mean, I, for example, I serve on, on one board that comes before the, on more than one occasion to the enhancement.
Right. So you state that you're on the board.
And I'm on the board.
And I think people can raise...
Questions if they wish to.
Is that right?
Yeah.
They can raise questions. And to the extent, you know, you feel that there is a true conflict of interest, even though it's not a legal conflict of interest, you can take the appropriate action.
I mean, in terms of the other decisions that we make, I mean, this is a similar situation to even Urban Rental Commission, where we have to put a different hat. I mean, if we're on the board at CHP at that meeting, that's our hat. And when we're here, our hat's a different hat. So I think it's just a matter of...
It's much like your service on the South Fork Water Board, too.
Exactly.
The key is the pecuniary interest. And if any of you develop an interest that's financially one way or the other to your advantage in any of those capacities, then that should be a trigger that you need to talk to us.
Right.
Do, well, I guess the last thing is, do we, do, I will let the rest of the commissions say whether they feel comfortable enough with the wording that's there in terms of the financial agreement, or the financial, it's that a report that includes an update on the city, to the city on the financial status. Is that wording that everyone else is okay with?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. I mean, if somebody wants something changed, we want to do it. Now, I don't want to put off another commission.
Right. No, absolutely. No.
So with that, somebody wish to put forward a motion?
Okay. I'll give this a go. I move to adopt the license agreement to allow operation at the end of the Oregon Trail Center by CHP.
I have a second.
A second.
Here, here it comes. Okay. It was a motion made by Carol Polly, seconded by Rocky Smith. And waiting for the totals to come up. It's unanimous. Motion passes.
Yay.
Now, I believe what we have before us here is a consent agenda. Do I have a, no, wait a minute. Yes, that's correct. The other item was pulled. The other thing that we have here is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by pushing a button. And it's so much faster when we do it by voice. And we're waiting for...
Really? You think?
Yeah. We're waiting for the numbers to come up.
We're waiting for one more vote.
Oh, that was mine.
I think mine.
She is.
So a unanimous vote on the consent agenda. And then we'll go into communications from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to report that our library director, Maureen Cole, has let me know that Representative Bill Kenimer and Alan Olson have both agreed to read Storytime at the library.
Oh, nice.
That's nice. Very nice. Also, when Nancy Crushhour left her position as Public Works Director, it's been in the city's plan for many years to look at separating the city engineer, public works director role, even though when we recruit for a permanent public works director, we're going to seek the qualifications of a professional engineer as an applicant. But we don't necessarily think the positions work best when it's the same person. And so it's, it's been in the city's plan for many years to decouple that position so that they're not completely dependent on the same person. That said, also, we have some workload issues because, as you know, John is vacating essentially his position as supervisor of operations to step forward and, and take on the interim assignment. So we are going to contract out the city engineering position temporarily for that service to Wallace Engineering. And John, did you want to say anything about that? Did you, commission have any questions about it? It's a sort of a temporary measure until we can make a permanent adjustment.
Okay.
Right. So we've signed a contract with Wallace for an hourly rate through the end of October. The idea would, it's an engineer who we've worked a lot with. It's a single person that would be in the office that would help us deal with day-to-day issues here at City Hall, oversee project management, development review, kind of variety of things that he could help us with. So I feel good about having somebody like this person who we're familiar with. He's familiar with most of our standards, our contracting procedures, and he's actually been managing several of our projects. So, projects that are winding down. So, sounds like a good fit, short-term fit. But a good fit.
Well, this should help us. It helps me a lot not worry as much about reduced capacity from losing Nancy and then also having John step forward. Also wanted to let you know, Main Street's got their new newsletter out. Lots of good information in there. And I know we've had a lot of questions about our Main Street program, but there's some statistics and other information in there. I just encourage commissioners to hang onto that as a resource because it's good information for you when you're communicating with your constituents. Also, I think Chief Conrad had a little bit of a report that he wanted to make tonight about some changes they're doing in code enforcement and other places.
Sure. Just to give you an update on the downtown parking situation, which I'm sure you hear a lot about down there, and quite honestly, so do I.
Every day.
The good news is, it is finished in August. So all the construction will be done in August. And hopefully, things get back to normal down there. One of the things we've had recently is, we have an intern from Portin State University. He's working with us for a few months. And we're going to send him down there and do a survey of the available parking spaces. And also, we're going to attach to that a customer, customer survey, basically asking people about how they like the parking down there, what's going on down there, what we, what can we do to improve things. And hopefully, use that as a tool to meet some of the needs that we're, we're hearing about down in the downtown area. We also have, all the new kiosks have been installed down there, where there's 12 in the downtown area and one in the municipal lot. And the two additional handicap spaces that, that we're going to install will be now the completion of the construction, which gives us a total of 11 in the downtown area. And one's going to be added at 8th and Main, and the other one will be added at 6th and Main. So hopefully, as, as the construction finishes, we'll get back to normal down there and we'll see how the, rest of the implementation of the parking plan goes. But I think we're on the right track down there.
Great.
Chief, and one of the things I want to also mention to the commission is, I know the mayor and I have experienced this frequently. Sometimes when we get parking complaints, they'll come directly to me or to one of you. And many times, the, there's a CC on there to half a dozen or more people. And I think that leads to confusion even among us of, well, who's going to, who's going to jump on this one and who's going to get back? So today, when I was meeting with the chief and his command staff about this, Lieutenant Bill Clur is the person that's responsible for that operation in the police department. And so I think it would help both the police department and all of us, as well as the members of the public who have questions or complaints, to use that resource. So when they come to, when that happens, if you get one of those that I'm not included on, if I'm included on them, I'm going to, I'm going to send them to Lieutenant Clur. But if you, if you get one that's, that I'm not included on, send it to me and that's where it's going to go. And I think that will provide a more consistent flow of information between the customer and the city. And I think it'll improve service as well. The next thing I wanted to mention is that the mayor and I met today with presiding Judge Herndon at the Clackamas County Circuit Court. And in an effort to initiate another dialogue about parking downtown, mostly surrounding the courthouse operation, our estimates are that we have about 100,000 people a year visiting our downtown, 70,000 of those connected in one way or another to the courthouse operation. So it's, it's just the, to me, it's the elephant in the room as far as parking in our downtown, that the city cannot, with a street grid laid out for horse and buggy traffic, no matter how creative we are, and the constraints of the bluff and the river, we're never going to, on ground surface parking, be able to really adequately address the county facility needs in our downtown. So what I, and I've heard, I think you all heard that Commissioner Edgar come here a few months ago and say that he had talked to county commission members and they had pledged to him that willingness to solve the problem and build a multi-story parking, parking structure.
Right.
Well, of course, when I heard that, I thought the first thing I need to do the day after that is email the county administrator and say, do you, should we talk about this? Because I didn't realize you had that, that kind of resource commitment. And if you do, we want to, maybe we can help.
Yeah.
And so I did follow up with that after Commissioner Edgar reported it. And I got a very quick response. There's no money. The commission hasn't made a commitment like that. And so somehow, there's a, we're getting different stories. And so this is just maybe an old-fashioned way of doing it. But I wanted to get people at the table. And then I wanted to pledge, all I can do, as you know, unless it's budgeted, is to make a recommendation to you on expenditures. So I went to our finance department. And I thought to myself, you know, I know these solutions can be expensive. That doesn't mean they have to be. Because I think there should be a feasibility study of the county facility's impact in our downtown and that the county should, should primarily fund that and should initiate it and should follow through. But I also want to be a good partner as much as we can. And so we had this meeting with the judge today because I've been hearing different stories and the same ones you've heard, that, well, one person will say it's the city's fault, somebody else will say it's the state's fault, somebody else will say it's the county's fault. And I don't care whose fault it is. I want to help solve the problem. So when we had the judge in, in our meeting today, he seemed eager to, to that as well. And to reiterate how, how it works, and I think a lot, everyone has good intentions here, but the challenge is, it's a state, these are state employees, most of them, it's a state service, but the county's statutory responsibility is to provide adequate facilities. Now, we're going to get into argument about adequate. But adequate facilities are not, you know, that might have been adequate 50 years ago or even 25. But with a growing county and the projected population to go over 400,000 in relatively short order, I don't see how this is going to get better. And so what I essentially want to do is challenge, put some money on the table, and from the city's perspective, with some caveats. And what I'd like to do is have your permission, well, as you know, I can make recommendations to you that you're free to follow or ignore at your discretion. So what I told the judge is, I'm, I'm, I've talked to our finance department to see how much one-time capital money we could find in our existing budget comfortably. And then to, to send a letter to the county that essentially pledges an amount up to that amount. Basically, my recommendation is available to you, that I would go to the city commission with a recommendation that we spend up to $300,000 of city money on a solution if there are certain conditions that would be met. Number one, the parking improvements would have to be generally available to all Oregon city residents. And number two, that it would have to be proportionate to the county's impact in the downtown. In other words, it wouldn't be fair for city residents to spend 300,000 and the county say, that's a perfect solution. You can stop right there. So if it's 70, 30 is the distribution, and that's our estimate, then it makes sense to me that if, if we put in 100, then they should be putting in 300. And then we've got 400,000 to look at improvements. Multi-level parking structures are wonderful, but they're very expensive. 30,000 to 35,000 per space, which doesn't get you a lot of spaces for very much money. There may be a shorter-term solution... There may be a shorter-term solution, there may be a surface parking solution. I still think they should study it, but I also don't want to be so presumptuous that I should step forward or the city should step forward and say, hey, county, let us try to figure out your facilities' master plans and manage all of these impacts for you, and we'll suggest the solutions, and we'll pay for them and manage them. I don't want to, I don't want to even pretend that we're in that role, because I think that would be impractical and inappropriate. But I do want to be able to send that letter to the county and challenge them and use that money as sort of a challenge, so that the county can look at their resources and the state can look at their resources and say, well, we've got a potential match here from the city on a solution. And if we're serious about the solution, let's step forward and do it. Because this opportunity, we won't have probably that money every year to put on the table. We've been fortunate in the past 12 months that we have had that money available, but it also, if I write that letter, it won't be a commitment from you. It'll be my pledge to make a recommendation. If I'm satisfied that all those criteria have been met, then it'll be up to the commission whether or not to take that recommendation. But if nothing else, it may stimulate some thoughtful debate and dialogue among the various entities that are causing these impacts, to really take it seriously and do something about it. And so, I'm going to be working on that letter. If any of you have thoughts about that or you're concerned, tell me now, or think about it and tell me next week or tomorrow. But I'm going to try to work on the letter. I can send the commissioners, I can send you a draft of what I'm going to send and make sure you're comfortable before it goes out the door. And I also pledged to the judge that I would send him a draft in case he had some comments as well. So, that was probably a meeting that's about a year overdue, but we got to it. Also, I sent the commission an email earlier today that the president-elect of the International City Management Association has asked me to serve on their international committee. And I described to you a little bit what's in that. So, I've heard from Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Neil, or Mayor Neil Lee, that they're supportive of my participation. It requires me to participate in at least two meetings a year. The one in Copenhagen, I won't be going to.
I won't.
Except by Skype. As it turns out, this is one of the most expensive cities in the world to visit. So, I'll be there by Skype if I'm there at all. And I did clarify with ICMA that they understand that cities, you know, that we can't fly all over the world doing this work. But it's, it is a way to advocate best practices around the world, and also for us to get ideas from other, other countries. And we have a lot of international city manager members from New Zealand and Australia that have some, done some very innovative things, and I'm kind of interested in getting information from some of their programs. So, anyway, feedback from the commission on, on that. It's a three-year term that I would be appointed to, but I wouldn't be doing it without the full unanimous consent of the commission. And then, finally, we have some workload issues, some staffing issues. We have, how can I, if you think of an analogy of a restaurant owner who has three four-star chefs in the kitchen, and one of them's busting tables, and the other one's washing dishes, and the other one's cooking the meals, maybe you need a busboy and a dishwasher and only one four-star chef. Well, we've got some expensive staff here that are doing tasks, support staff tasks, that it just isn't very efficient. And you know that's the problem, when you have an organization like ours that's lean and understaffed, it really helps you weather a recession, but it doesn't necessarily help you deliver efficient service. And we've got some workload issues that are starting to back up in the city recorder's office. We also have a strong need for support staff in the community development department, the parks department, and economic development. We have Eric, but when I find him at the copy machine for an hour doing tasks that are clerical in nature, I'm not getting the most bang for the buck out of that person. So, we're looking at the possibility of bringing on a support staff person that would be shared by those three departments. But of course, we would do more analysis before we did anything like that, and I would come back to the commission and let you know. But I just wanted to let you know that we're studying that possibility right now, because we do have some real constraints on our ability to deliver the service we need to. And we need more support staff, frankly. We've added these talented key positions, but without the support staff, we're not getting as much bang for the buck as we should from those. So, that's all I have tonight, unless somebody else has one of the other members. That's good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. My turn. First thing, this is the year of the celebration of the 150th anniversary of Union Pacific. I was invited to an event and asked them how long it's been since they've been here in Oregon's, Oregon City and Portland, and they didn't know the answer, but they'd give back to me. I'm sorry, I failed to write down the date. I think it's July 31st, but there is going to be a Union Pacific caravan coming through. Is the 31st correct?
I think that's right.
And so, we'll see some, they're not vintage Union Pacific trains like old steam locomotives, but some of them may date back 40 or 50 years.
Mayor, they have extra room on that. I got a notice from Brock Nelson today that they, did you get that?
Yeah, I think they need to know by Friday.
I personally can't, but I think it'd be wonderful.
I've responded that I'd be there. And so...
When was the email sent? A month ago?
Well, there was a follow-up today.
So, you might check your emails today. Yes, check the emails today.
You may not be on the list, it's a very...
That's what happens when you send that to Rocky.
You could be my guest.
You can boot it off the train.
You could be my guest with the mayor's guest name.
Boot it off the train.
Boot it off.
Probably, probably about a month ago, I sent out a list of, of League of Oregon City listed legislative priorities. And I got responses from some of you that wanted to list our top four, and we didn't, those who submitted didn't necessarily agree. But what I did is, I looked at the, basically, where I got a majority of votes, and there was a, one of these monkey surveys, Survey Monkey pieces that was coming from our, from our regional mayor's group to find out what the different cities felt. So, what I'm going to do briefly is say which ones got the majority of the vote for the top four. And that was the Jobs Economic Development Initiative that supports funding for new industrial site development among us. And among all the cities that submitted their requests, that was their number-two issue. The other, another one was, restore equity in our property tax system by resetting assessed value to real market value when a property is sold or constructed. I'm just going to hold, I'm just going to kind of hold this up and turn them around. This is the, this is the tally essentially of votes that came in from the various cities in the region that submitted. And there's a whole bunch of them. You got one, two, three, and then a whole bunch of our four, five, and six. That one fell into four, five, and six in terms of the other cities' positions. The next one was amend public contracting code to remove all, this is a majority of the people that voted on this. Not necessarily everybody that submitted agreed with this, I just want to make that clear. Amend the public contracting code to remove all costly requirements that do not aid in delivery of public improvements and defend against new requirements that do not serve public interest. This, this is, this is one that was in the four, five, and six lists here. It was not one that we voted on, though. Human resources sources, this is one that came in the top four among the majority. Estimate the requirement that public employees provide subsidized health insurance for retirees. And that was on the four, five, and six lists of the, of the cities that submitted. And finally, we had among ours, support legislation to supplement and perhaps eventually replace the gas taxes, principal road user fee, funding the states and road and highway systems. That one didn't fall into the overall city's rankings. But those are the ones that we had. Oh, excuse me, did I mention restore equity in our property tax system? Okay. And so, those were the items we had at the regional mayor's meetings. We had people from the League of Oregon City. They feel they have to tackle legislation on a piecemeal basis. But let me kind of just take in a moment and indicate, there were two, basically, two measures that came into effect through the initiative process, Measures Five and Fifty. And these had a tremendous impact on us. One was setting the limits that we could be taxed per thousand. For most public services, that was at $10 per million, per million, per thousand value of taxes. And then set the educational units at 5,000, at 5 dollars, 5 dollars per thousand dollars. And then later on, Measure Fifty came and rolled, rolled back the property tax values we had and then limited to 3%. One of the difficulties that we're, we're beginning to realize is that what they call compression, that when the different taxing entities hit these, hit these upper limits, then the loss has to be shared among them. And the first ones to go, actually, before the four cities and counties would be hit, would be the special districts. And in our county, the two I know of is a special sheriff's levy, and the other one, I think, is the vector control levy. And those, those two could disappear if the, if the compression continues, and then we could see the effects. It wouldn't impact us as much because we are not charging our full levy. So, that's one of the reasons we're sort of protected. But the things that they want to pursue is, first of all, to, when you have something approved by the voter, like the sheriff's levy, that it simply doesn't disappear like it currently would if compression came in. The other one the League of Oregon Cities is interested in pursuing, of course, is the resale, when a house is sold, to set it at the current, at the current, at the current value rather than at the, the free, the market value is supposed to the set's value.
So, you mean, set it at the current value.
Right. So, if I, well, what I should say is this, my house is really old, it's valued at a certain amount, but I was here when it happened, so mine's been increasing at 3% only. If I sold the house and say I was lucky enough to get $200,000 for it, it would be at that 3% level. I mean, it would be at the, I should say it would have been...
Get to 200,000 and then 3% from there.
Yeah, 3% from there. And so, it doesn't go up, it doesn't have the same value as a new $200,000. And so, I would pay less taxes than a new $200,000 house would. And they want to address that particular issue when the house is sold. So, those are items that probably the League of Oregon City are taking forward. Now, what we could do is, we could let our, let the League of Oregon City knows what these four priorities are that we put forward, or we could include the, if we wanted to make an alteration, include the one that was not included by the group, and that was, that was M, and we didn't have it. Defeat legislation that would extend or make permanent moratorium on raising existing or levying new local gas taxes or any other legislation that proposes to restrict or preempt cities' ability to charge any transportation-related fee or tax. That's a little confusing, but the concern is there, is, vehicles are becoming more efficient. The result is, the tax dollars going into, for paying for road services and so forth are less because people are dealing with it. And there's some legislation proposed to actually prohibit us from going through my able-traveled tax base or something of that nature. That's something that actually came out number one in the overall city's evaluations. So, if we want to make an independent recommendation, we have to do it by the 31st, and I don't know, I don't know if you want to give me any recommendations on how to proceed there or not.
I think we give, I give you feedback.
You, yes, I, there are two commissioners and myself that did the thing.
Yeah.
So, I can go with the majority, the majority of those.
I think that's...
Okay, so do that. And with that, we got something to put on the screen? While you're putting on the screen, there's one vacancy on the planning commission, and we don't have any other vacancies on our meetings. But one thing I wanted to mention is that I am, I'm probably going to write a letter removing somebody from one of our advisory boards. They have not come to any of the last four meetings, they have not, they have not communicated at all with the board that they weren't coming. And so, that particular person is not, is not contributing. And my intent is to write a letter vacating that position and reopening it. I won't mention the committee at this time, I just don't want to embarrass anybody. Anyway, what I have up here is a map...
Is it in the drawing?
That, that wasn't, that was a map that shows a, although it looks like a minor acquisition of Metro, this is, this is the big map of Newell Creek Canyon that shows Metro acquisitions. There's a minor acquisition I wanted to point out that has just occurred. And why that is so important is actually at the confluence of Abernathy Creek, of Newell Creek with Abernathy Creek. So, it's a rather important one. I think we stand roughly at 260 acres acquisition in Newell Creek Canyon by, by the, by Metro. And I just wanted to mention that little piece at the top...
Little piece at the top.
Is a rather important one because it represents the confluence of Newell Creek with Abernathy Creek. Those are real nice areas to work with. And there, we guess see the rest of the, of the Metro procurements in the, in the green color here. No, that's not all of them, because we have things on this side. I guess this is, I guess the outlined portions there, the ones that you see in the outlines there on the procurements, and I saw this one. Anyway, that was my report. Does anybody else have any reports? Kathy may want to make an announcement, but then our...
Oh, that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, tomorrow is our Conversations with Commissioner at Haggins', I forgot the name of the cafe, it's their cafe.
It's in it.
Market Street Cafe.
Market Street Cafe.
Yeah, six, and we hope to see a lot of citizens there, just to talk to us. Purpose of this is for us to listen, not to talk, and so, hopefully, that's what will happen there. I have two other things. Again, Eric, I really want to thank you for that downtown tour. It was just extremely informative and amazing. There were some really amazing things that I saw during that. And then, lastly, I've been finishing up FEMA certifications for the Federal Emergency Management Association, and they mentioned that FEMA would love to see more elected officials in, go through training of this type. It is pretty extensive, it's going to be around 75 hours before I finish, but they feel like it would be extremely helpful for communities to have people that are trained in these kind of things.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith.
I had one meeting I thought I'd, I went to the Bridge Event Planning Meeting...
Oh.
Which is the, the festival that will be part of the grand opening of the Arch Bridge. And the festival itself is, oh, Lambeth Falls Festival, I think, is what it's called, I have it written down. But it's a partnership of a lot of groups that are working to create the events that go through the three days of the opening of the bridge, which is October 12th through the 14th. ODOT has stated publicly that that's the, that's the date, and that's, that's where we're all working. And the bridge will be, basically, there'll be a festival on the bridge and throughout the community, both communities, October 12th, 13th, 14th, with the bridge actually officially opening on Monday, October 15th.
Woo-hoo.
There's a lot of stuff going on. This is, this is a huge, they've had multiple meetings, but this is a collaboration between Lambeth Falls Heritage Area Coalition, which is doing a lot of the planning work, City of Oregon City, City of Westland, ODOT, and Clackamas County Tourism Development Council. And three days of events, and it's a lot, it's a little overwhelming. But it's going to be amazing. And I guess by complete coincidence, or maybe fate, the Thursday, October 11th, is the Oregon City-Westland football game.
Oh, that's a bonus.
We can cross the bridge the next day.
That's a bonus.
Yeah, we can't cross, we're not supposed to cross the bridge on the day of the game, but we can the next day.
Oh, that's, that's cool. Oh, that's great.
So that was just by chance. And so, it's really exciting. So really, we're going to end up, I think it's an opportunity for us, I'll probably bring this up a little later, but we always do a Oregon City-Westland proclamation as part of the game, the rivalry, but I think maybe we should probably do something a little bit more between the two cities for this.
Love it.
Because it's going to be an entire week of really amazing celebrations we have. What would happen that week would be, October 9th would be the Oregon City-Westland Breakfast at the Elks Club, then you'd have the football game, October 11th, and I'm not sure off the top of my head, I think the football game's at Westland. I'll have to check on that. And then, with the three days of October 12th, 13th, 14th. There's several events planned that we're working on, and from anything from, you know, parades, and there's, we're working on a renewal of vows for a wedding.
Oh.
As many of you know, one of the main events of the original grand opening of the bridge was a marriage, a wedding that took place on the bridge. And so, we are working on doing a renewal of vows, which is the renewal of the bridge opening, and having that open to anyone who wants to renew their vows, that's the hope. There's a lot of planning involved, there's also, there would be a wedding reception following that.
Same couples still around?
Oh, I don't know about that. I don't think so. I don't think so.
Eight years ago.
And so, anyway, not a lot of, I mean, I'm not going to go through a lot of details because a lot of work still needs to be done, but you can, we're definite that you can put that on your calendar for that weekend and know that you're going to be at the bridge.
Exciting.
Let's see, what else? Oh, hey, I drove the roundabout.
I did too.
I haven't.
How many times you go around it?
I went around it, okay.
He was supposed to meet me at 10 o'clock at night and go around the roundabout, but I wasn't there either, so I-
We had the ribbon cutting of the Washington Street-Clackamas River Drive connection, and I wasn't able to meet the ribbon cutting for the overpass part of it, so this was my first time actually getting to walk down there and see all the details of the project. But, and I was worried that I might have been being followed by a police car or something, so I didn't drive, I didn't do this. Like, I drove through the roundabout and continued on to Clackamas River Drive, and then I turned around and I drove back through the roundabout.
Was that a legal U-turn?
And I did that, I did, it was a legal U-turn. I drove into a parking lot off the street, and I turned around.
Good job.
And I did that multiple times. Throughout the day, but-
Only took me one time, Rocky.
No, I have to really enjoy it.
Enjoy that.
I guess, I guess, what's so great, I mean, we all, you know, we've all heard about the project so much, we've all been a part of the project so much, but now that that piece is open, you finally really get to experience how awesome that's going to be.
Yeah.
I mean, getting through that intersection in the morning or afternoon is a nightmare. And so, you know, driving right under the 213 and getting over to Clackamas River Drive, or the other leg that's going to be worked on for the next six weeks, when that's completed, I think this is going to be incredible. So, man, it's been a hard couple months living in this town, but, you know, by the fall, this is going to be a pretty awesome place.
Yes.
I'm down on Main Street, it's summer break, so I'm doing a lot of catch-up work, and I'm on Main Street almost every day, at Coffee Rush, doing stuff, and I, in fact, when I was gone for a week out of the city, the first thing I did, I mean, I drove, I was in Vancouver, Canada, for a week, and I got home at maybe midnight, 1:30 in the morning from that long, that drive, and instead of just driving straight to my house, I drove down Main Street. I wanted to drive down Main Street to see what I'd missed in that week. And so, like, it is a mess on Main Street, but if you can park at the elevator and go down there and hang out on Main Street, it's been a blast this week. There's so much going on, it's like, it seems like every building is being worked on, it seems that every sidewalk is being, it seems that way because it is. But I've taken my camera down there every single day, there's all sorts of, like, history being uncovered. When the awning came off a bush building, that was amazing, but when they were digging into the sidewalk, there was a piece of the basement of bushes that goes out under the street or under the sidewalk, and so it unveiled this passageway there that is still visible today. So there's a lot of really cool things happening downtown, and I just try to go visit the bridge every day. How beautiful it is. I don't, if you haven't, you know, you drive by, it's such a mess with the construction movement, if you haven't walked down the alleyway by Me Familiar and actually looked at how nice that bridge is, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
It's going to be incredible. So, thanks to everyone that's working on all those projects, and it's really exciting. And I guess, the one thing, I don't know, we haven't mentioned this, I wanted to ask how, what the timeline was for Singer Falls, do we know that?
The lighting?
The process, yeah, how's that going?
I haven't checked in quite here recently, but the last time I heard, kind of some design drawings, turns out we only have a left bit of the metro that we hear about, and then the materials are there about six weeks out, so we'd really like to have that in place.
In time for the event, so that was something we were working on.
Oh, for, yeah, by the fall. And I, you know, we, all of us in this room probably know this, but maybe not everyone knows this, it was when we were on our tour of Main Street, that the announcement about the elevator was made, and I think it, well, yeah, it was in the paper this morning. That is so significant to me, I am amazed by it. I'm, I was excited about the grant process, but I have to say, I was kind of a little skeptical that we would get anything, and I think what's so incredible, too, is that everyone else can see what's happening on Main Street, and we were in a situation where we were going to have all of the ISOs on Main Street fixed, except for, not all of them. But, I mean, when you, when you think about all of the key landmarks in downtown Oregon City, they're all having makeovers, and with the exception of the elevator, and now we know that that's going to be taken care of, too. So, $100,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts for the outside of the elevator, so what else can I say? That's just incredible.
$240,000 project overall, and really, hats off, have to go to our staff and Main Street Oregon City who worked on it together. I mean, it was Public Works Center, Main Street Oregon City, that really pulled it off, and, you know, they're getting to be pretty darn good grant writers, and-
That's right.
Also, I think they're inclined to reward success, so I think that we started to build a reputation with the granting authorities, that we make good use of the dollars, and you can see the difference, and that our applications are credible and meaningful and necessary. So I think that all those things have helped.
And I understand that our city was granted the most out of any of the cities.
I have to tell you a story about the elevator, I was in there the other day, and there was a family of four, and they were looking around the elevator and asking questions about it and stuff, and I said, "Well, where are you from?" And they said, "Well, Westland, we look at this thing every day out of our living room window, but we didn't know what it was."
Rocky, if I could, if I could say something, you acknowledged a lot of things that were going on down there, and I just want to acknowledge Eric Worgren, and then the new gentleman who's going to be our interim city engineer, Adam Crafts. Those two gentlemen know just about every business tenant, building owner, on that street, and they're dealing with issues that aren't fun all the time, and, you know, many of them are difficult.
It was a zoo down there today. I mean, it was with the farmer's market and traffic, because one lane, that one side of the street was closed, and people were driving and crossing, I mean, there were so many people downtown, and I don't know how the, you know, crossing guards and the traffic people were dealing with, it was crazy. But they did a good job, I talked to a good portion of some of the workers down there, and-
One of our employees recently had jury duty, and reported to me that, and this is, and apparently the other people didn't have any idea that this person worked for the city, and said, you know, "When court got out and there were breaks, people were commenting about Oregon City, how the downtown has just totally gone through a transformation." And, you know, I know we get a lot of the complaint parts, but there's an awful lot of compliments out there that we never hear about.
Right.
And she reported to me, that's almost exclusively to a person, what they were saying, over and over. And they're going to tell other people, and that's what we're hoping for.
You can just sit there on a bench on Main Street and watch people walk down the street, and just seeing them take notice of individual buildings and plans stuck on the buildings, and what they're going to look like, and businesses moving in, and artwork being installed, and, you know, people are sitting there stopping and talking about it nonstop.
You mentioned that new art piece that went in last week. And I, Rocky, you probably remember the name of the artist, I'm not from, what was it?
I don't have it, I have it with me somewhere.
It's right in front of the courthouse.
Right in front of the courthouse.
Oh, wait, it's in this thing.
It's in this thing, yeah. It's in here somewhere.
Anyway, that's the city's newest piece of art that was-
Lamont Compass, he's a Seattle artist, and Brandon Zebold, yeah.
That's correct.
I know there was a volunteer committee that worked hard on that as well.
It's cool.
And of all the things that-
Another thing about that piece of art, I looked at it and I could understand.
I need to.
And you are all aware of the things that are happening, and we're talking about them now, but, you know, we look at our, we look at our city as a, it's a continuum. And so, we are constantly, even this morning, I had a meeting with people from Main Street about additional things we could apply for, and additional things that need to be done, and so we're already starting to load the pipeline again-
Yeah.
For the next round of competitive opportunities that will come our way. So, you know, eventually, I don't know if you're ever done building a city and creating a community, I don't think that work ever stops, but I just want the commission to know that we're still focused on the next thing, because those don't just happen if you don't get the pipeline full. So that's what we're working on.
Cathy mentioned, and I want to come to it, actually, the tour that was taken last Wednesday, we had, we had one of the county commissioners from Multnomah County was there. We had several people from Clackamas County, but the point is, we had people from other places. We had the mayor of Hillsborough was there, one of the Metro council people from the far reaches of Washington County was there. And the mayor of Hillsborough was particularly taken by what we were doing there. They've got two one-way streets going through their main street area, and they're trying to figure out how to deal with that, and they were very impressed with what was happening in Oregon City and how we've made that transition. So, it was, I think it was very beneficial to other people, besides those people in Oregon City, to see what we were doing. Anything else?
Yeah, I do, real quick.
Good. I mean, I don't mean real quick, I mean real good.
And real quick, right. As the commission rep on the Main Street Board, I've been busy doing my walkabouts, I went down to all the businesses and made sure that they had one of these flyers, I can leave some up here, too, for the Metro workshops, that are sponsored by Metro, they're free, and they're being done at the Cypress, they're once a month. And the first one, we just had a handful of people, and so I made sure to pass these out again, I put a sticky note on each one, I was at the first one, it was great, come see me at the second one. And we had a few handfuls of people at this one, the turnout was wonderful. And this is just an example of giving, you know, a hand up to businesses, giving them education. This one was about how to beautify your storefront, high-impact storefronts, and just very, very good. Let me see. The first city celebration is July 28th, so mark your calendars, everybody on Main Street's looking forward to seeing you. And business owners are wondering specifics on advertising, as far as saying that, you know, the bridge is open. Is there going to be some sort of communication between, like, ODOT and the city and Main Street to try to really get the word out and unify some sort of campaign to let people know that we're back in business?
Right, so I spoke with Susan Hansen, who's the ODOT project, she's, she spreads the word, marketing for ODOT, does a lot of that on many of the projects, and she gave me a lengthy update, which I was planning to send to you, or send to David, that he would forward to you, on all the planning that they're doing. They're planning radio spots, newspaper articles, so press releases on the opening. They were at the meeting today as well, she was at the meeting today about the events. But aside from the events, they're advertising Oregon City being open for business, they also, she also indicated if we wanted to prepare anything or give them anything, they would include that. So, she also said, she said, when they close the bridge, the number, I'm not recollecting, but you'll get it in the email, 30,000 to 40,000 letters, direct letters went out, and to letting people know of the closure, and they're going to do the same thing on the opening. So, there's a pretty big effort that ODOT is planning to do, and she committed to several things like that, so.
We had approximately 1,000 people come to the closure on a rainy day to move.
Yeah, she acknowledged that, so, you know, she also said that they're estimating a lot of people to show up on the opening event as well.
It's going to be a couple thousand. Incidentally, some people were asking questions at that closure, because ODOT people were keeping pedestrians off of the sidewalks when they had the closure. They saw the volume of people coming, and they weren't sure, actually, that the sidewalks would support that volume of people. So they will probably confine people to the street during the opening, and they don't want a whole bunch of people on the sidewalks.
She didn't mention that, I asked her if it would be open or, you know, complete. She did indicate that there's going to, work will continue through, on the bridge, through March 31st, 2013, but it will be open to traffic and pedestrians on, really, for the event, and then, you know, directly after, it'll be open to, it'll be open for the event, so it'll still be closed, but-
At the time of the closure, of course, they hadn't done their evaluation of things underneath, so that was probably one of the reasons they wanted to keep the pedestrians off the sidewalks.
Right, right. But with this opening, you'll be able to be on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
John, have we thought of having an invitation put in the Westland paper, inviting them over?
Well, they're in the, they're in the, they're in the event.
Only if they invite us.
No, 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 it's got to come this way.
I just want to make sure that the businesses on Main Street get all this information, because it sounds great, and that they know that something's planned for them, so, it sounds good.
Okay, yeah, I'll share that.
Anything else? I did want to follow up, because of those people that come early to the conversations with the commission, they can go back to the Carnegie's Concerts in the Park, which starts at 6:30, that's going to be Reddick Christie, and she's going to do 40s and 50s jazz, and we'll, before the next commission meeting, we'll have another Concerts in the Park with Franco Paletti and the Stingers, which is a blues group. So we've got those vans coming up, the Concerts in the Park, before the next commission meeting. And with that, meeting's closed.